I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the planning commission. And if SCTV is taping, thank you very much. If you're not, we can say anything we want to say. We are missing two regular members, and my schedule says that Rich, you and Ron are at the order to serve tonight.
Very good.
Okay? You accept? All right. Do you want to -- do the applicants have any opening remarks, anything to say before the start question?
Last time, I think that they may want to just sort of talk a little bit about some of the points that came up and then finish up their three and three.
I agree. Gus Jasminski from Ensign Bickford Realty. We have Andy -- Gus Jasminski from Ensign Bickford Realty. We have Andy DeFato, the president of Ensign Bickford Realty here. We have Bob Stevens from Stevens Landscape Architects, and Raj Janesco and Chris Nelson from Landworks Realty. In the two weeks since we presented last time, really only a couple of changes have occurred. On the middle site here where the senior assisted living facility is, we convinced them over that time that they are going to be in the pad. So we moved that parcel back into the pad. They finally agreed with us. So that was a big change, and we saw in your comments that that was one of the comments you'd like to see in your minutes of the last meeting. We also sent out yesterday, they gave us a vignette on the corner of the building. They really are not that far along with their design, but they have other facilities that the architecture is similar. So what they did is they took a little vignette, a little potential corner of the building, just to give you a flavor for the architecture. And that's really, that's the big changes. It's not a whole elevation or anything, but at least give you a flavor for their architecture. And we have Ron, he's got a couple of other little things he'd like to talk about.
Right. I just have a couple of things to hand out to you, if I can get an assistant. That was the deal, right? I'm sorry. This is an article that was in the Wall Street Journal just, I think, yesterday morning. And it talks about rental housing, kind of the boom, and that they're projecting it's going, it's coming. Now, we kind of, we understood that a couple of years ago when we started Mil Commons, but it's a very interesting article, and it talks a lot about the demographic that last meeting, we had very little time to really kind of get into. But it talks, you know, quite a bit about the variety of housing and that renters by choice these days, and the whole impact of difficulty in young folks getting a mortgage if they wanted to buy. So I thought that that would be helpful. It kind of goes hand in hand with the other materials that we handed out. The other thing that I have is we did go to the EDC, and while this is not the official, this is the draft minutes that are posted on the town website, and I thought it might be interesting for you to hear what that economic development group had to say, especially because last meeting with you folks, we did focus a lot on the economics and also talked a little bit about the school population thing. And that's pretty much it. I do have, there were some questions last time about some products that will be built. And our two most recent are Mill Pond Crossing Town Homes, which we're building right now overlooking Mill Pond at, overlooking West Street. And then Carson Way is the project, which is right here. And these, we're just now starting the marking process. So I just figured, you know, if you want to take one, please do. And I'm here for any questions if you have, as are the others of our team. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? I've got an easy one. Where'd the name Carson Way come from?
Naming a development is probably harder than anything else, because all the good names have been taken, they say. But we researched old families from town, you know, the Ensigns and Beckfords and whatnot. And Carson was a name we found back in history, and it was something that a Carson didn't already exist, a Carson Street, or Carson Way, or Carson Drive, or Carson Commons, or anything. So by default, it was one of the few names available that the police department, the fire department, planning and zoning department could all agree on.
Okay. Well, ask another question while we're waiting for anybody else. I, you know, I read, I really did read and look at everything, and thank you for the overkill, if you will. The phasing, how do you see the phasing and timing? Some people are worried about, well, is it, will this all be done in a year and be vacant? Or do you do, does the market dictate you build some? And you did mention you're going to do all three kind of simultaneously. And so, how do you see that?
Starting again from a macro standpoint, they're just about to start the earth excavation here, which this commission is well aware of, that there's a lot of material.
A lot of material.
And this will take a year, maybe two years, depending on the demand for sandy gravel. So this is kind of far in the future. This, we're, we could get going right away, and we're prepared to get going right away. And again, we want to absorb the two distinct rental properties at the same time, because there are different market segments, and therefore, instead of doing this all, and then waiting, and then doing this, we'll absorb both at the same time. And it is somewhat market dependent, but we always have to have product out in front. Because when people come to make a rental decision, it's not like building a custom home where they're, they're going to take six, seven months to do it. And even with ownership product, you know, we like to have some product that's 60 days away, sheet rocked, and then they still can choose their cabinets and the countertops and things like that. But with the rental product, you really have to build it, and then they come. Over at Mil Commons, I think we're about 24 months into the construction cycle, more or less. So it was six months of site prep and everything, and then 18 months of actual hard construction. And we, at this point, I think we leased six in the last 10 days apartments there at Mil Commons. So that's a very brisk pace. We're right now at about 87% occupied. So again, it goes somewhat cyclical, the winter, between, say, Christmas and 10 days ago, it was the normal lull in the market, and spring markets here now picks up. So again, we have the confidence, this is all product that's slotted below Mil Commons from a size and price point, so the absorption is going to be quicker. So if I had to guess, I would say it's maybe a two-year process, because there's about 108 of these, and there's 96 of these. So it's two different projects really being absorbed at the same time.
Can the makeup change between those two projects? Do you want to expand and one decrease?
In theory, but to do that, we would have to reapply, basically. So I know when the zone hopefully gets blanketed, and then we have a master development plan, and that will be basically this, refined with grading and utilities and everything, into a site plan. And if we wanted to change something, like let's say down the line, something did change, and this was even more popular than we thought, and we wanted to sprinkle some of that in, we would have to come through, hire them back to the commissions, and say, we'd like to modify the plans. So this is what our, you know, we are confident in this, but you raised a good point. It is possible. We did come back at Mil Commons. We started off with a walk-up product, and through the process realized an elevator, a higher-end elevator product with one-to-one garage would suit a lot of the marketplace. So we went back to the commissions and said, hey, here's some new findings. We listened to all the different boards and commissions, and it was suggested we look at this. We did, and we modified the plan to everyone's satisfaction. And the townhomes, they're kind of, as I mentioned two weeks ago, as we finish up the Mill Pond Crossing Town Homes, which I gave you the brochures on, we'll then slot right into these. So this is independent of these, and these will kind of go at the same time.
And the assisted living facility, he thinks that he will be in front of the commissions in the summer or in the fall. He's just, he's kind of working out his design and getting started on that, so he should be in front of you sometime later this year.
Want to go left to right? Question?
No questions.
Good. Since you're now here, Ron, because of seniority, well, you're a sir for the missing fellow. Okay. Any other questions?
Mark. I'm concerned with the commercial aspect of this. There's nothing planned there. It's something in the future. And a PAD is supposed to be a complete plan, and that's a big entity that is not defined. I mean, by rights, you could just put in a Dunkin' Donuts there because it fits and it would do well there, but there's no restriction there. And you haven't defined that commercial aspect, and in a PAD, we're supposed to have a well-balanced mix. And I don't see that here. I only see apartments.
I, I'll think I'll let Hiram answer that, because the zone is designed where they could not just come in and put a Dunkin' Donuts here. The only thing that would be approved here is the, what you see. Anything that would change.
Well, you've given us three or four different variations of what that could be.
Well, again, I'll.
I think, and I can't speak for what they have in mind. I think that Mr. Stevens came in and presented a couple of different concepts of where the buildings would be located here, but there's no question that the commercial slash retail component of this is as it's shown here. If one building moves a little bit in one direction or a little bit in the other direction, I don't think that's really the purpose of this particular exercise. The idea is, is that there's a portion of it that's commercial, there's a portion of it that has to do with a different phase of living, and then the other portions are for different, obviously, younger people, some younger than others. But again, there are different mixes of uses that are there. So as Ron said before, if they were to change this significantly, or frankly, if there was something significantly different other than what's been represented as part of this process, it would come back to the, at least the zoning commission for revision, because it's their PAD that they've got to decide whether to approve or not approve. So it's not like they can just say, well, we'll put a Dunkin' Donuts here, and we'll put a Nike store here, and we'll, you know, it just, that's not what's been represented. So that would have to come back for.
Nothing been represented there, other than five buildings.
Well, you can see it that way if you like, but there's no commercial rep or retail component that's been excluded. There's no question about that.
No, okay.
But there's, there's not been any discussion about any fast foods, there's not been any discussion about any drive-throughs, which would all be part of what I suspect that they would want to see there. There's no question that all of these things, look at the PAD on West Street, look at the PAD at Doris.
Yes, we had a restaurant that was in place before the residential aspect even started. So it was well-defined already. We had something to go by. And we don't have that here at all. All we have is apartments, and those will be built right away, and then that commercial piece could be left for years.
Okay, and the problem with that is?
Well, this is supposed to be a well-defined master plan, just because, I mean, it's been a commercial area or a commercial park for years too. That doesn't mean that it's actually going to happen.
No, but I think the fact is that, as was represented by EB and early on, they've tried to do this in a different way for 30 years. Nothing's happened.
Understand.
Okay, what's the worst thing that could happen here? They change their mind, and they have to come back and say, well, we changed our mind here. Is that acceptable? Then the commissions have to deal with, is that acceptable or isn't it acceptable? I mean, if you want to ensure that nothing happens, then what the plan that's in place for this area already currently is pretty much a status quo. I think that's, that's what they made represented during their presentation.
Understand.
There's no, there's no market for that.
I've always understood that a PAD is, is a well-thought-out, complete plan. And just because I designate an area as, well, potentially, we're going to have this as a commercial area, I'm a little concerned with, because the big key here is the residential part. That's the gold nugget out of this whole development area here. I mean, I don't have a problem with it, it's just I want some safeguards here that, for instance, there's nothing to say that Dunkin' Donuts couldn't go in there, because it fits within a commercial retail space, does it not?
Well, again, I think that if it were proposed there, the zoning commission's going to have to make a determination as to whether it fits within what's been represented to them.
Proposed?
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty generic there. It's commercial retail.
And it's already been approved, right?
Well, yes, once the PAD goes in, it's already been approved. There's no, you know, it will fit within that criteria.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to tell you anything, to dissuade you.
No, I know, I'm just.
Let me try, because two weeks ago, I kind of mentioned how the PAD, and I've read it, and I've commented on it before, it was even a regulation to give a little feedback, and we were the first ones to utilize the PAD. Now, in the case of West Street, we had everything fairly well-defined up front. The reason is because we spent about a year through the zoning process, there was no, there wasn't even a pad in existence when we were already working on it. So the intent of the pad, as I understand it, is more like we're doing it this time, where we come in, and if you look at the regulation, there are these four different distinct phases of creating a PAD. One is, is the idea of mixture of uses acceptable in a location. That's the first step. The second step is a master development plan, where you have building layouts, which they provided, very finite. They're located here, they have all the parking, they have the sidewalk systems, everything. They have a rendering of what they'll look like. And that's the master development plan that says, if you build this like this, now we haven't identified actual uses yet, restaurant, we've said these are the types of things, but before that can be established, our team would come back and say, good news, we've got a tenant lined up. A tenant would like to build a medical office here, or a general office with an accounting firm, or whatever, and it fits right in there, and these are the hours of operation, and is this an acceptable use, as we then expand it into a site plan. So until all those steps are taken, we can't get a building permit. So I think the idea of the PAD is it's an inter- interactive process through a long thing. It would be kind of counter to the idea of the PAD if we had full-blown site plans with grading and landscaping and everything else, before we even know if the idea of mixing uses is acceptable. So, you know, I can't speak for Andy and Gus, but, you know, from working on this with them for the last 12 months or so, you know, this is not locking you into anything at this point, because it's not yet defined.
I'm Andy DeFato with Ensign Bickford. Gus and I work together, Hiram helps us out on our designs and stuff. But to go just one step further, to give you a feeling, this is an extremely important site from Ensign Bickford's standpoint. I mean, that's the front door to the whole project. I can tell you, we've talked to a restaurant person, that's a possibility. I can tell you, we've talked to an office building, possible use there. None of these are ready to go. We can't even develop this site yet, because we've got to take all this material out, which is like 90-some thousand cubic yards of material have to come out. So we wanted to give you a conceptual picture of what would be acceptable to Ensign Bickford, but we can't go ahead and design the whole thing, because we just don't know.
I understand.
And when you look at the entire area, you know, two existing office buildings, the hotel, a medical building, the car deal across the street, gas station, I mean, I think that meets the intent of the PAD, which is a wide mixed-use type project. So from that standpoint, we were very comfortable with it, and we prefer to keep this in the PAD rather than extracting it, because we think it makes sense. It just, that was our preferred layout, because we thought if we can get something here, and then maybe a couple of buildings here on a retail-type nature, could be an office building. But it flows the way we want it to flow as an entrance to the whole powdered forest. So, and as it was said, and I mean, we've had permits now for over 30 years, we haven't landed another office building that would be a premier on that site yet. So it's just, we're coming to you guys saying, hey, this is our best idea of, here's a concept of what would be acceptable to us from a design standpoint, smaller buildings, so we could get multiple uses. I don't see fireworks standing there, and I don't see, you know, a log cabin, we don't plan for that to be residential. I mean, there's a whole lot of things that are just totally unacceptable to us. So we were just trying to convey what we would like to see, right, how it could evolve. I agree with you, we don't have it defined yet, and we certainly couldn't, because we can't come in and make promises that we couldn't deliver.
So those five buildings, or six buildings?
Six.
Are defined, and they will have to be, who, Hiram, you'll better answer this question. Who will be the determinator of what actually goes in there, or what's allowed to go in there? Not necessarily business-wise, but building-wise. Depending on what the need of whoever may enter into that spot is going to want a building of a certain size, and with a certain amount of parking, and that could be limitless, potentially.
Yeah.
Once we pass this PAD, we have no control, we don't have a bite of that apple as far as what goes into that spot.
The commissions do.
Yeah, the commissions do. I mean, there's.
Zoning does.
You asked who was going to control it, and I'll tell you that the design review board is going to look at it first, from a design standpoint. They're going to make recommendations to the zoning commission. So from a design standpoint, you know, we have to have faith in the process here.
I understand. I'm just saying, what kind of control is there going to be ultimately? I mean, it's a big unknown there in three, if it's locked in, we're locked into that concept, and, okay, that concept may change. And it will have to go in front of who, if it's changed?
The first thing would be the design review board, is for the design of the buildings. The second thing would be that the zoning commission is going to look at it based upon the information that was presented, the initial concept, and see if that meets the initial concept. It's not true that they could simply make, blow out a big, huge parking lot here and have 500 parking spaces. What they're locked into by this change, if the zoning commission approves it, is the general location of this development, that probably the number of buildings or the type of buildings that they've shown here, certainly the coverage that's shown on this particular site, and the analysis that you have shows how much this is, I forget now, was it 75, about 75,000 square feet?
75,000 square meters.
So, so those things are kind of, they're locked in. The whole purpose of the PAD was to allow somebody to come in and say, we've got this idea, what do you think about this idea for mixing these particular uses? We don't want to design it down to the doorknobs, because that's going to cost a lot of money.
I agree.
But here's, here's where we are at this point. And what, what the planning commission's idea, you know, role in this is, is to make a recommendation to the zoning commission as to whether you think it fits into the concept of the PAD with regard to the mixed uses, and what, and what you see here. The design review board and the zoning commission are going to get the next shot at what these structures look like. These are residential structures. Design review board, because it's a commercial facility, had a lot of input into West Street, what those look like. So, you know, that's, that's, that's what we're controlling.
Just to give you a real brief comfort level thing, I mentioned over at Mil Commons how we were kind of learning all of this together. And at one point, we said, you know what, let's make a revision to the plan. And we came to Hiram and we said, you know, all these different boards and commissions are a great focus group as to what the town needs. We could use elevator product more for older folks or folks with disabilities, so 100% of those units at Mil Commons are ADA. So we, through Hiram, we came back to the commission, the design review board and the zoning commission, and we made a request for a modification to the plan. So just like with this, if this ultimately was three owner-occupied office buildings in an office condo concept, because once the site got leveled, and some rooftops started up, and now all of a sudden, we've created the demand for this, that's a good thing. Well, the team would come back, say, Hiram, good news, we've got three owner tenants, and redesign, and we'd have to come back through the process and say, you said, you know, mixed uses in this configuration, this location was good. Here we are now with a revised master plan. And if that's acceptable, then full-blown engineering, site plan, landscape plan, where all the shrubs are, and all that goes through design review and zoning as well. So there's a lot of checks and balances, and, you know, we, we as a group have had, I think, a good experience in working with staff to make sure we're in compliance, and anytime, we actually went to zoning on one of those issues, and the zoning commission kind of said, you really didn't, this isn't significant enough to warrant a full rehearing. But they endorsed the modifications we requested, and everything worked out fine. So, you know, we're, that's kind of the way we see the process, that this is not the end-all and be-all. This is an idea, and if you like the idea, then we will progress and do more detail and bring you more information in the future.
Hiram, so our objective is the planning commission is just to judge if it meets the criteria of the pad. Is that correct?
And P O C D.
And P O C D.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's a question I would have, since we're going to make a decision on whether this proposed master plan does in fact reflect the requirements of the P O C D. Are there certain elements of the P O C D you'd like us to be aware of, that you've included in, in this master development plan?
Andy, I think. This is unrehearsed.
Yeah, totally unrehearsed.
The two of us can, you know, the PAD was created and can only exist in locations like this. It can only go into commercial areas. When the PAD was created, sites like this were analyzed as being the types of places where it would be appropriate to apply. Otherwise, we wouldn't have come and made the request. So I think the P O C D talks about the mixture of uses, complementary, and things of this nature. And when I think of the plan of conservation and development, and I think about the collaboration between uses here, and working counter-cyclical traffic concerns, like if this was all office buildings, and we provided that traffic report, so I just, I think on balance, you know, all the things, all the reasons why the PAD was created, I think this, if you had a checklist, would, would knock them down pretty well.
Yeah, I think that's pretty true. But I think that what I would say is, is just to take Andy off the hook for a minute, is that I think that what the plan of conservation and development did specifically talk about was mixing uses, trying to create areas where the neighborhood or the area that was being created was walkable, hopefully to transit. We talked about that possibility of transit, you know, a path down to the bus station and so on. Mix of uses, mixing a variety of residential products, so that different sizes and different price points could be available for the public. So those are the kinds of things that are clearly.
The economic development, that's very big, obviously.
It is, no question about that.
Part of the PAD. That's a part of the PAD. PAD is.
No, but it's part of the plan of conservation development.
Oh, yeah.
A whole section, it's very important.
So the fact that a lot of information has been given to the, to the commission with regard to the economic impact, the positive economic impact, and the positive impact with regard to schools, I think people were talking about schools a lot. There's a huge hole, obviously, in the school system.
I don't think that's justification to build something is a lack of students. I just.
It's not, it's not to say that, it's simply to say that, that this development, and I'm not speaking for the applicant here, but just what the data says, is that this development is not going to have a significant impact on the school system.
Right. So speaking of economic activity, can someone just walk me through the economic activity and how they came up with 17 and a half? 17.7 million dollars in economic.
Sure. I'm not going to look at the report, I'm going to just tell you, because I'm the one that created the form. Oh, sorry, the mic. What I did was, we had the demographic data that, that targets 10-mile ring around the property, and that's, that's the exhibits that is the, you know, trio-prepared demographics in it. And it lists, I think it was like an average household income level in that 10-mile ring of 140,000, and that equated to a certain number of dollars spent for that household. Now, I did not feel that, that the housing we're planning to build here is going to be that average household income range of 140,000. So based on the price points that we envision here, I brought that down by a factor of about half. So I said, okay, let's assume that the folks in here are averaging around 70,000 to 75,000 per household, so two wage earners at 30 to 40, or one wage earner that's, that's higher than that, that might be living in the townhomes. So I just took kind of the economic activity of 140, averaged, and I reduced it down to that 50 or 53% factor to come up with a relative amount.
So do you think that's a fair amount? If they're earning 75, and going to spend $70,000? They're earning $75,000, and they're going to spend $70,000 in town? Do you think that's an accurate reflection?
They might actually spend more. Well, this is the, you know, it all depends. The higher you go, you would assume maybe they're a little more fiscally conservative. But a lot of those dollars spent are investments. So if you look at one of the line items listed there, there's an investments thing, so it's a savings. So again, assuming we have some financial advisors in town, and someone is working on their 401K or an IRA or whatever.
Right.
Those are dollars spent and invested locally. So you're right, I mean, when you look at 140, it's like, boy, that's a lot of spending.
Someone's earning 75,000, and they're going to spend 70,000 in town.
The best I could do, not being an economist myself, is I tried to explain my math in the report, and I used actual hard numbers, and I said, well, if it's relative, then I think that's a reasonable number to. then I think that's a reasonable number to, to, to show you."
Yeah, it just seems to me it would be overstated.
Could be over, could be adding. Because you know what? Just like what the average income level here, I mean, our experience over Bradford Walk and even at Mill Pond Crossing now is cash buyers, townhomes, homes, single-family homes over here. I know when Andy and I were presenting before zoning regarding Carson Way, I was amazed at how many people are just writing a, a check out of, investing, a Morgan Stanley account or whatever, to pay cash for these. So, it could be, it could be understated, it could be overstated, it could be about right, so. But still, we know that 252 households plus 186 households, these will be lower probably, but there are 120 units of independent, congregate-type living in here, and this wasn't even accounted into that number. So I was trying to be conservative.
The other thing that Plan of Conservation Development talks about is the Wheaton Center Zone. And while I know that the town has done a little charrette, and they're working on the Wheaton Center Zone, they haven't really published the findings yet, and they're still working on it, and we think, you know, our development there kind of ties in with, you know, it's the post offices, Mitchell's, it's the hair salon, it's the medical office building, it's Simsbury Inn. And, you know, we're kind of on, on the light at the other end of it, and we kind of, it ties into the Wheaton Center Zone while we're technically not in the Wheaton Center Zone. It's kind of a, it all kind of works together, and we're right across the street from Mitchell. So, we, we think that that kind of, it enhances the Wheaton Center Zone.
Hiram, where's that, the Center Zone, the Wheaton Center Zone starting?
It goes from 165?
Yep.
Up, up to, goes up to 445, actually.
The light.
I mean, your parcel, that commercial parcel is within that Center Zone for the most part.
That whole area is, it's what's called the Village District.
Right.
Yeah. That was, that was the plan, that was the idea. What, what that shows in the draft of the, of that regulation that's together now includes some of these parcels here. It doesn't go deep into this parcel, which is a possibility, but that, that exact delineation yet hasn't been determined yet.
Okay.
One of the things that was mentioned, and I'm not sure if we mentioned it this commission or not, but we had found out through a third party that the Sunoco Station on West Street, once the apartments were built, his business increased substantially. And it goes back to that argument, if you bring that rooftops in, then the businesses are going to grow a little bit and expand. We've got that same effect here. We feel like these extra residences, people living there are going to maybe generate another restaurant or two with more business in town. Another item that we mentioned in the Economic Development Commission was the fact that right now, we're paying the town less than $1,300 a year. So it's $1,300 a year for all of this, okay? When this is built, we're going to be paying in the neighborhood of that $2 million a year or more in taxes, and there's another $2 million in fees to be able to build these that we have to pay the town to move forward. So with the fact that the school kids are a very minor incremental cost to the system, because if you've got a classroom and there's 20 kids and you add one more, it really doesn't cost you, you know, that much more to add that extra student or two. So the fact that we've covered the school, we've covered the traffic, we've got a tremendous boost in tax revenue to the town, we fit within the general feeling of the town in terms of it being a pad which is multiple uses all within a given area. And the fact that it will generate, we're not asking for a master development approval on the whole site. That's what Ron's going to do with his area, because he's much more advanced. All we're asking is for your endorsement that the pad be landed, and then we can go through the remainder of the steps for these other two projects. This one's a lot more advanced than this, but this obviously is the one...
Will be driven by the others.
Exactly.
Alan, do you mind taking on your mind, Mr. First Park, your question?
Yeah, I...
You'll see it by the way.
Yeah, I'm, I apologize for giving you a little family question. The question I had is, how do you think this relates to the charrette and the plans for the town center? The idea of the town center, among other things, was to have a great density of population and have that be the center of Simsbury. Do you think this competes with that?
Do you want to take the first part? I'll take the second part. Why don't you take these parts, and I'll take these parts.
Okay. Well, let me give a little bit broader view. We already mentioned the Village District, and that's going to be in this area here. The town, I believe, is looking at possibly five different Village Districts, so it's not just the center of town. We're looking at the center of town as one area, but we're also looking at other pockets. Simsbury is a phenomenal bedroom community. There's no doubt about that. People pay extra taxes to be here, you all know that. We all pay more than we would in other towns. But that's because of the life that we have here, and the services, the amenities that are all going with that as a package. So with that in mind, what we're doing is we're hopefully creating more of that synergy with the different uses, all kind of blending together. We're going to be right next to the Village District for Wheaton, and, and we think we're very consistent with what the town is actually trying to do.
That's my question.
Okay.
If this becomes, if this becomes the new town center, I think that's contrary to what we wanted to do, and what I think of here, outside the window here.
Okay.
So I, you want to get down to this? I just want to make sure that in 20 years, when we think of the center of Simsbury, it's the center of Simsbury.
Let me, let me answer it, because I think, I think this is probably the biggest change in what was anticipated here. Because we talked about last time that 600,000 square feet of class A office was, was anticipated here 30 years ago, which is another Hartford building in, in magnitude. And after 30 years of, of trying, nothing was built. It's just not the right location for that. So to find something else, you know, these two, Andy can, can talk more about these later, this is demand-based. This works only when everything that's already out there is already occupied, and there's a demand for, for new construction, because new construction is very expensive versus a building that might have been here for 20, 30, 40, 50 years. The housing and the apartments are kind of the new, the new twist to this, and how does that blend in with the charrette, let's say? Because I followed the whole charrette process, and one of the exhibits I handed out last time to you, on the front side was the zoning commission's minutes of our informal with them a few months ago, and on the other side were some highlights from the charrette process. And it talked about that Simsbury as a whole needs a lot of multifamily. It was kind of like, where is the multifamily was the question? And so when we started counting up, and I think Andy recalled it was 7, 8, 900 units of housing, would be a good critical mass that would reinvigorate and reverse that population trend. If you look at the Valley Towns, the state of Connecticut is projecting Avon and Farmington tiny bit of growth, 1% in the next several years. Simsbury has negative growth expectation. School population is, is kind of a, a sign of that. So when, when we planned out what type of housing, this is not town center kind of housing. This is really suburban-style housing. If housing is built here or in town center, it's going to be more like a blueback square, because I looked at all the plans, I went to the charrette, you know, presentations, it's a different type of lifestyle. It's, you know, so, so it's more about offering choice. So you don't have one plain vanilla where everything is that one kind of product. This will be, some folks might end up moving from here to a product in the town center, if it gets built. And this is one of those things where, as a policy board, you have to, you have to make those judgments. It's like, well, they're here now today, ready to get going. Bring some rooftops, bring that economic development. These folks, where are they going to go to shop and, and eat and everything else? They're going to go to town center.
I want them to walk. So, which they aren't going to do. So you're going to bring four or 500 new citizens to Simsbury? Maybe not. Maybe they'll move from other houses.
Retain some too, hopefully.
Yeah. Okay. So, but, Hiram, you may not be the only answer to this, but if the town center went as the charrette assumes, and I realize there's a lot of fudge there, but how many citizens do you think that will hold, housing?
Yeah, I guess, let me, let me back up to answer your question a little bit differently. Your first question had to do with whether this is going to compete with the town center.
Right.
And I don't think it will at all, for the reasons that Ron mentioned. The other thing is that each one of the Village Districts that we've talked about, we've talked about Terrifield, we've talked about the North Village, we've talked about the South Village, we've talked about Wheaton, and even West Simsbury. Each one of those is going to get to go through the Village, if I ask it long, going to get to go through the Village District process to discuss it. Each one of those is going to have a very different character than the town center. And so the housing that would be in the town center is going to be very different than this. And you'll, and believe it or not, there are two or three plans that are being worked on right now that you'll see in the next, hopefully next few months, that'll show exactly that. So I don't think this is going to compete with the town center, but I do think it's going to be additive. And so that what's going to happen here is that as people begin to come in and populate this area, these people here maybe go over, over the hill into West Hartford to work. People on the north end may have gone over to Day Hill. That's a very, that's a kind of a different market. And I think the different sizes of the units and the different product here will probably lead to that. But the way these things are laid out is clearly not a town center design, no question. So it's a little different.
So it isn't like, if you visualize Simsbury, you still would visualize this as the heart of the community, the commercial center?
Absolutely.
And the residential density center?
Yeah, I think, I think that some people, I mean, based upon what could happen, based on the charrette plans, the density in the center could be significantly increased, there's no question about that. There was a significant amount of additional development that could take place, infill development, primarily on the other side of Hot Meadow Street, but down along Iron Horse as well. So there's a significant amount of density that could take place there, very walkable, as you said. Could people walk down here and get on the trail and bike up? Sure, they could. And then maybe they will. They could walk down, take the bus, too. Generally, this is probably not, well, they are going to have sidewalks and things, they've talked about that, but generally, this is not the type of thing where people are going to walk from here to the center just because they feel like it. I mean, if they want a couple of property, there's probably places there, they can go to the inn, they can go to the gas station, wherever, or post office. There's probably places that are closer. The idea is to create something within that village area that will serve their...
There's some essentials you work within your own area.
Yeah, yeah, they could go down across the street and buy a car. I guess that's essential.
And density is going to push that.
Yep.
Basically, what we're saying is, is density, that density there of 200 units is going to push the commercialization or the small village that we're looking for in Wheaton.
Exactly. Because Wheaton is, is too small to have its own critical mass.
Right. There's nothing there, no one's going to build anything there, because there's nothing surrounding it to support it.
It's just like town center now. Town center would not function if not for all of Simsbury using it. So just the population within town center, there actually really isn't.
And the major component of the charrette was to get a residential component downtown so that you enhance the downtown, just because of the numbers alone are going to support all of the commercial...
More self-sustaining.
Correct. And that's what everyone was looking for. And so a residential component was the most necessary piece of that puzzle. And in a small village, another residential component is there, and that's going to drive the commercial side of it.
Just think, just think, for example, in the North Village area, you know, I mean, Gregor's not here tonight, but he's a big booster of the North Village area, and with the big Y, hopefully, starting very soon, there will be a lot of spin-off additional economic activity in that area. There's obviously going to be 299 additional residences from Meadowwood, going through that for 10 or 11 years. But there's going to be a significant amount of residential development in that area that's going to bolster sort of, you know, provide a substance to, to that whole economic area as well. So I think people that, they can shop up in that area, they may put stores up in that area, whether, and maybe even a Dunkin' Donuts is up there, they have a restaurant up there.
We need to do more.
Yeah. But I mean, they need the people in order to support the retail.
Right. And when you talk about, just one other point, when you talk about competing against town center, town center has the library, it's got the fire department, it's got the townhome, it's got restaurants, it's got all the things here that make it a town center, and these other villages aren't going to be that kind of a...
I just don't want to be Avon. Okay, everything you're saying...
You don't want to be Avon?
I don't want to be Avon. I want to be Avon, and I live there, but I, I just don't want where I live to be all spread out and unidentifiable. You don't, it's like Long Island.
Yeah.
If you, I don't know anything about Massapequa, but I know it's on Long Island. I don't think you know when you got there and when you left. It's all the same stuff. 50, 60 miles.
One of the nice things about this is how...
Did I insult anybody?
Isolating is...
You can buy the building.
How hidden and isolated this is, is kind of a nice thing, is that we get that economic activity, and they come out at a control point with a traffic light, and they enjoy the amenities that, that are so rich here in Simsbury. So, I hear what you're saying, and again, this was one of the planning concepts that we came up with as transitions from single-family detached to an attached-for-sale-to-rental product, you know? So, again, it's...
One of the things I think of also, if it isn't this, what would it be?
Well, that goes to the traffic report, and you know...
You should always ask yourself that.
Complementary uses instead of competing uses, and...
So let me, as long as you're in a giving mood here.
Yeah.
What do you, as a developer builder, think about participating, you or your friends, participating in the town center? Do you think that's a, an opportunity that's waiting to happen?
Sure.
Yeah?
The, I think the challenge is just that town center is so established, even with the guidelines, it's, to get it kick-started is the difficult thing. Assembling enough properties and then working...
Well, I got to get that parking lot, that's what we need.
It's, it's just, it, it, it's very exciting as a developer. I find it very exciting, and, you know, we have things that we would like to pursue in the future. It's just, we made commitments to our friends at E B, and we're trying to help finish this up and bring some population in, and then two, three, four years from now might be exactly the right time, and businesses will be hopefully flourishing with our new residents and Mill Commons fully occupied, and Mill Pond Crossing, and Carson Way, and, and everything else, so...
Where comes the town center about four years from now when I retire? Because I'll be in a different place.
Mark it in the calendar.
When you look at a town center typically, the densities are very different. That's why when you drive in, suddenly, you know, for instance, Mill Commons, it's closer to 10 units per acre. Buildings are very tight, everything's very dense. I'm assuming when, when the town center starts being developed, it's, it's, that density is going to be closer to 10 units per acre or, or a high-density higher, because you really, you want people, New York City, Manhattan's a perfect example, they just keep going up 100 stories, and, and there's people everywhere. Here, on this, there's, it's basically five units per acre. So it's, it's significantly lower, it's, it's nowhere near a town center density when you drive through, it's more of a suburban.
So you might call it a transitional area?
Yeah. It's significantly more dense than single, a, a single-family home subdivision, but it's, it's nowhere near what could be in your center.
You know, that, that's a really good point. You know, if, if you look at the Village District as centering down where the post office is in Wheaton, and this is kind of the fringe of the Village District area, that's, that's exactly the density that, that came to mind there.
Well, this is how West Hartford Center kind of, kind of works so well for so many generations, is the town, the West Hartford Center doesn't really have population in it, it's got commercial, but the concentric rings around it are driving the population there. And this is similar, is we'll have all these folks here, and they can go to town center or Wheaton someday.
On the trolley.
The workforce, well, could never be condos, right? The way they're designed? Could they be, with the outdoor parking and something?
We're not designing them that way, and we, we hinted a little bit at this two weeks ago. Mill Commons is an example where it would be an easier thing to envision someday, 20, 30 years, 50 years from now, condo-ing them. 30 years, 50 years from now, condo-ing them. It's one garage per unit, it's, you know. This, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, it's highly unlikely. It's a moderately priced product, it's going to be very nice, but it's a breezeway entry, you know. These would be closer, but we have ownership opportunities. So as developers, we're not at all setting these up in any way, shape, or form to be condo-ed in the future.
Can I ask another question, too, if you're done, Ferb? So right now apartments are hot, okay? Everybody's rushing to be the first guy at the trough, okay? Something like that. I remember when condos were like that. Condos were really hot. And what happened, just what you'd expect, they overdid the condos, they converted anything into a condo. So what happens if apartments in 20 years aren't as hot? What happens to apartments when the market, maybe it never will happen, but what happens to apartments when the market slows down, the rent goes down?
As people that have lived through a few cycles, we haven't lived through as many as some, but we've seen the cycles up and down. The late 80s, we had way too much inventory, we had a real overhang then. But the more recent one, not really. Part of it's because there's not that much land to be developed, and permitting is not the easiest thing to do. There are, and I don't mean that in a negative way, that towns like this are very conscious of what is going into their community. In Simsbury's case, I think the last new market apartments built were in the early 80s. And so kind of when you, when you look at the growth, and this is some of the D E C D information that I researched when I was preparing for this, and why Simsbury has negative growth, is that the single-family detached grew in the last 20, 30 years, the multifamily didn't grow at all. So you're getting more and more out of balance. So I think this type of thing, even if two or three or four more, if the seven to 900 units are eventually built over the next 10 years, that becomes the new core of what Simsbury is. I have never seen rents in Greater Hartford in the 25 years I've been in the development business go down. It's just, there's, supply is always up there. If you look at the latest statistics, Wall Street Journal, I think two weeks ago ran an article, Greater Hartford Market is one of the top five in the nation regarding vacancy rates for multifamily, because it's been so hard to find sites that were appropriate for them, and the permitting was not the easiest.
The other thing, just on a long-term trend, is demographics are in your favor, because the country as a whole with immigration is growing every year. So, you know, 20 years from now, there's going to be more people in the U.S., there's going to be more people in Simsbury. The other trend is there's less people per house, and that's been going down. I mean, you know, in 1900, it was typical for three generations to live in a house. Now you're lucky to get one or two generations in a house, and as families split up, there's single partners living in smaller units, so there's going to be, over time, there's going to be more people and more households, so.
Then I have one last question. So you're sorry you started this, but does this and projects like it have any effect on the 30, 40-year-old single-family homes that are half a mile away, mile away?
I, you know.
I'm not suggesting that it's bad for them, but I'm just curious if it affects private home.
Do you mean, do you mean value, Alan?
Yes, just about.
You know, that's a hard, hard question to answer. I don't really have an appraisal background, but from my perspective, they operate independently of each other and have always have. We've seen households reform lately, in the last five, six, seven years, as the economy did what it did. Young folks weren't moving out after they graduated from college, they stayed home. Fortunately, that's reversing now. We're starting to see household formation again, and that in part may be what's driving some of our demand. So when you have, you know, years and years of people not able to move out, now all of a sudden they do get that job, and now they might be taking one of the older apartments, and that person who got a raise might be moving to one of the newer apartments, and the whole cycle goes forward, and then at some point, somebody's like, you know what? We have this over at Mill Commons, someone that wants us to build them a home over here. They've been renting there, they took a job, relocated from out of state, weren't sure of the town, they, you know, they're like, well, we don't want to buy something too quick. Let's rent at this beautiful new apartment, see if we like it, and they love it. And so they're going to be one of the first buyers here. So I think that whole, you know, domino effect works well, and you backfill existing homes and attract new households.
So you think the two are basically independent? I do. I think it was different markets.
I would say that, to that extent, I would agree. The other thing that's important, though, is this is a new product. And what a lot of people are looking for today, and these folks know better than I, is new product that has some amenities to it, whether it has to do with counters and cabinets and refrigerators and things. But what we have in town is a lot of old housing stock, a lot of apartments that are really the newest. A lot of our single-family homes aren't the newest. And so there's going to be a lot of replacement that takes place. Would not surprise me in the future to see not a lot of additional subdivisions with new lots created, but I would think that people are going to scrape those existing lots, and those little tiny capes that are there are going to come down, and somebody's going to build a nice house that fits their family. I think that's what we're going to see for the next 10 years.
Well, you're seeing some of that in West Hartford, because around the perimeter of the center of West Hartford, you've now got other families, younger families, moving in, renovating 50, 60-year-old houses and making them really nice, and they don't want the McMansion. They're saying, hey, I'd rather be even walking distance.
Gentrification.
Yeah. So I mean, that's a real thing. The other thing that will have some bearing on the existing housing stock, because there are a lot of houses from the 70s, some have been renovated and others really haven't changed at all since people moved in. But the reality is, there's a large part of the population that are getting divorced. So you still have families splitting up, you still have kids, you know, with one parent or with the other parent, or in some cases, sharing back and forth. So there's a lot of mobility in the marketplace. And what we haven't had, as, you know, Hiram and Ron said, is new, high-efficiency stock that people could move into and say, yeah, okay, it's not a McMansion, but I got a town home, it's energy efficient, and it's costing me half what my utilities used to be.
And I also don't need a $50,000 down payment or deposit, because we're talking about banking regulations that have changed drastically, and people can't come up with that 20%. And in this town, that's a big 20%.
My youngest daughter in California, her husband, all their friends, they just, they're renting. I mean, their parents all have houses, but they want to do other things with their money. They don't want, they all have great jobs, but they want to either travel or get a fancier car, and of course, California, you know, a 900 square foot house is $4 million, but still, a lot of this age. Of course, I think we need this demographic in Simsbury. I mean, we don't, it's not like we have a lot of apartments, and I think it could energize the thing. I know with the commercial building, it's a chicken and egg thing, you know? If you gave us all your tenants now, and they're all, that would make it a lot easier, but you have to build it to get them interested. And obviously, I think it's, you know, the glass is half full.
The other thing we're kind of banking on is.
If you don't put the foundation in, no one's going to build.
The other thing we're kind of banking on is that there's been virtually no growth for the last six years because of the downturn in the economy. We seem to think that, okay, it's starting to turn, there's starting to be business. I mean, the insurance companies have not hired for years, although Triolus is actually making some pretty good money, and some of the insurance companies are turning around. And, you know, at some point, there's going to be hiring, there's going to be job creation, there's going to be people leaving the big companies and forming their own. And our kind of product here is really great for the, I mean, we used to see through the 90s and the early 2000s, you'd have people leaving the insurance companies and all these things, starting their own business, and they'll take with them a couple of employees, and they need 2,000 square feet. We just, you know, we have property in Avon, and we used to see that, week after week, people are, it's a new company, it's foreign, we need 1,500, we need 2,000. The last six years, there's virtually nobody starting new businesses. And once the economy turns, we think that, you know, people will go back out and start new businesses, it'll be a better opportunity, and, you know, this type of layout is actually going to help them with that.
Here's one last thing. But Ensign Bigford, you know, we've been part of this community for years and years, and we didn't go out to find the cheapest builder we could find that could throw things up. We got Chris and Ron that win awards virtually for every project they do, and it's a high quality. So that was very important to us, just like that slight on the corner that you mentioned. We're very conscious about what our image is here. We've been here a long time, we want to maintain that goodwill that we have and make Simsbury continue to be as special as it already is, and if we can make it even better, we will. A lot of their product sits off the street, so you're still going to have a wide buffer, trees. It's not like we slammed it right up against the road, you know? We tried to make this thing feel really good.
Here's one last thing, and this is an irony, because two and a half years ago, we were starting the Mill Commons concept, and we started some meetings, and I was talking about the Hartford, and how we all know that people at the Hartford, the hiring people, were looking for, where's the new housing stock? Where's the diversity of housing stock? It can't all be million-dollar homes. Yeah, that's great for our upper management, but what about the 2,800 people under them? And so we talked about Mill Commons being an amenity for development and backfilling spaces like the Hartford. Before the Hartford announced they were leaving, we were already doing conceptual drawings here and saying, this is going to be such a boon for the Hartford, for hiring incentive, because it's an amenity-rich, it's just like in the article I handed out. It's got a diversity of sizes and price points, it's all high-quality, very energy-efficient. This is the definition of smart growth. We've got a great clubhouse with an internet cafe and a pool and all the amenities that folks want. So this goes like right on the top of the list in the sales materials for CBRE to say, hey, you're interested in maybe relocating your pharmaceutical company here? What does Simsbury have to offer? Well, here's some zoning work that we're working on, but here's also some great new housing, here's restaurants, here's the town center, which is fabulous, here's the, you know, performing arts center and their schedule. It just adds to the flavor and the, so.
Mill Commons, questions? Do you have any, do I have a motion? Do I have a call?
Yeah. I'll make a motion for a positive referral from the Planning Commission to the Zoning Commission for Zoning Commission Application Number 1403, submitted by Ensign Bigford Realty for zone change from I-2 to P-A-D on the properties located at 437 Hot Meadow Street, 200 Powder Forest Drive, 225 Powder Forest Drive, and 275 Powder Forest Drive. I'd just like the referral to note that if the commission agrees with me, that the applicant has successfully demonstrated their commitment to the P-A-D process and also adherence to the P-O-C-D.
Well said. Have a second?
Second.
Second, Kevin. Any questions, discretion?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? unanimous. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it very much.
Break a leg.
Break ground.
Yeah, break ground. And off the record, don't put a Dunkin' Donuts in there, there are already so many. Personal opinion. Am I allowed to say that?
But it's what a village needs.
You can't say that?
It's what Wheaton needs. It needs. Commercial development.
Can I say that?
It's got no place to get a coffee.
Okay.
I got one coffee pot down there at the mobile station. Mom, we're obviously 200 families going to get coffee.
I don't like Styrofoam cups. Communication administrative business.
Item B?
Okay, okay, yeah, I guess we, no, no, I saw that, I kind of thought we'd discuss that length, but we want to go more on apartments. It's on the agenda, I have to.
Can you do a short thing to decide whether you want to get questions now? I've got a bunch of stuff I want to give you to read, too, so.
Great.
More paper.
Bill, Mr. Rice, as always, came up with a whole series of good questions and sent those in. I think you all got them as well. Let me just go down those quickly. How can we, meaning town officials, know what the right number of apartments is? My answer to that is there is no right number, and I'll explain that, a quick answer to that. Is there a saturation point of apartments that will impact the town's image? And I guess before we talk about that, we need to talk about what that image is. What is your image? What do you think that that image is? And I've got a bunch of information that talks about our image. Is there a way to correlate the presence of rental units or apartments to the quality of life? One of the things that the Plan of Conservation Development talks about, of course, is housing for all segments of society, whether it's old, young, whatever, young professionals. Are there any studies that predict the change of property values adjacent to the large apartment units? I think Alan was headed toward this a while ago. Yes, there are. MIT has done a lot of those things, Harvard has done a lot as well, and give you some of that information tonight as well. You're right on point with regard to answering that question. When we speak about the character of Simsbury, what is meant by that? And that really is defined and talked about a lot in the Plan of Conservation Development. There was a lot of discussion over the past four years when that was created about what is character, what is our character? So there's a lot of discussion about that. So in order to determine how that character is affected, I think we need to talk about the specifics, which I can go into a little bit tonight. We realize that the P-O-C-D is not a regulation, there are plenty of words about affordable housing and increased density of downtown housing. Is there anything about limiting the number of apartments? Short answer to that is there is not in the current plan. But I think, based upon some of the information I'll give you tonight, you can decide whether that's something we ought to put in a revised plan or not, or whether we should just go with the way things are now. And then lastly, should our commission interfere with the developers' plans if they are compliant with all regulations? My short answer to that is no, for a variety of reasons. We want to make sure that they bring us what we want, and I think we need to make sure that their regulations are in place, that we do get that. So between the workforce housing zone regulation that we just recently passed, the P-A-D regulation, which has been very effective in the last two or three years in terms of getting people to come in, we've seen a variety of different things. So I think that that'll be helpful in the long term. I did want to give you a couple of sort of overview of some comments. In terms of Simsbury, there is a lot of discussion, and the zoning commission's asked me for the same information, so if they're watching this, that's great, and if they're not, they'll get this information at their next meeting as well. What we have is a series of documents, and also compared with other towns. For example, the number of single-family homes in Simsbury existing right now are right around 6350, 6,350. I'll give you all this stuff. With all the units that have been approved, and that includes Meadowwood and Carson Way, we talked about earlier this evening, the number of units goes to 6,723. That's the number of single-family homes we currently have. The number of condominiums, we currently have about 1,226. With the other 20 condos that are in, at Mill Pond, those are the only ones that are under construction at present time, 1,246. And then rentals, this was the question about apartments. There are currently in town about 775 rental units, according to the assessor's records. And with all the ones that have been approved, that is 168 units at East Point up in Dorset Crossing, plus 48 more units there with regard to the specialty needs, special needs housing, it comes out to about 991 units. So here's the percentages, these are kind of.
So wait, back up with, back that one up, just one second. So there's currently 770?
775, yeah.
And we've just approved how many total?
Their total, well, not counting tonight, obviously.
Well, let's count tonight.
Well, I didn't figure that in, because it hadn't been approved, and it still hasn't been approved.
Okay, so it's 252.
Give it a couple of weeks and I'll revise it.
252, it's 252 more than what we already approved.
Okay, so 991. The number of rental.
So wait a minute, so the number of units we've increased is 990, is that what you said?
991, yeah.
May I stop right there, though? The word rental units, does that mean if I rented my house, is that a rental unit? Or are we talking about apartments only, more than multiple dwellings?
We wouldn't know about that, the assessor wouldn't know about that unless you came in and declared it. So I'm going by what the assessor knows for sure are rental units.
So all the rental units are commercial property?
They are.
Right.
And so are the condos.
So just, I don't mean to stick on this one point, so there's currently 770 that that.
Are in use, right?
In use, and over the past.
There's 170 up in.
200 up at Dorset Crossing.
Dorset Crossing, which is bringing it to the 975.
268 plus the 48.
Right.
So we'll call it 200.
Yeah, so we're at 975 at this moment that are approved or actually lived in, and now we potentially will have another 200 here or 225 or so. The percentages are the kind of the interesting thing. Right. The amount of single-family homes that we have in this town, it's interesting, right about 75%, 75.03%. The number of condominiums, 13.9%. The number of rentals is at 11.06%. So people say, well, what do those mean? Are those good numbers or are those bad numbers? Well, let's take a look, and let's compare those with the other towns. I compared it with Farmington, Avon, Ken. So those are typically the towns that we get compared to. For example, in Farmington, the number of single-family dwellings is 8133. That's 77 percent of their housing stock. The number of rental units is 22.8 percent. So.
Double, double.
Yeah, more than double what we have. In Avon, for example, 81 percent, 81.9 percent, almost 82 percent of their housing stock is single-family dwellings. 18 percent of their housing stock. They also have 1,259 apartments. That's 18 percent of their housing stock.
So those two communities don't have hardly any condos?
They have significantly more because they're commercial, could be considered that, but hardly any. There's certainly some that are considered condominiums, no question. I can refine that a little bit more for you too, if you want. Canton, interesting, 81 percent, almost 82 percent of their housing stock are single-family, 18 percent rentals. So again, we're at 86 percent, about, you know, about 13 percent for rentals. It's interesting. So you say, what does that have in terms of impact on the values in town? Let me say this. Avon is number one median residential price is 406,000, it's over 406,000 in Avon. The second one is Farmington at 337,400. The third one is Canton at 330,000, and our median home value is 324,000. So the number of apartments, you can't, you can't say it's gonna add to the impact values.
Exactly.
That's the thing that's kinda surprising.
So that's why our grand list is down too.
Well, it may be, but I think what we're seeing now is a lot of development that in the next year or two is really gonna pick that back up. I told the board of selectmen the same thing the other night. In the long term, while it's bad that we're losing the Hartford, it's a million six or a million eight a year just in taxes, and that's bad, no question, we wanna make sure that that, something happens that that doesn't stay down. But what we're doing in the meantime is picking up that slack, and so we're gonna significantly make that up in the next couple of years. For example, the Big Y happened to do some numbers on that the other day. It's $250,000 a year once that's built. So that's obviously a quarter of a million dollars, this, you know, whether that comes forward right now or two years from now, that's gonna be a plus on the grand list as well. So those are some interesting numbers. One thing I wanted to give you is some sheets of, this is a series of housing statistics that were specifically done for, this one has to do with Simsbury. Talks a lot about the fact that we have only 3.4 percent of our housing units are affordable. We're still vulnerable to 8-30G that Meadowwood was proposed under and built under. Talks about the price of housing. It talks about, this is kind of an interesting thing, we were just talking about this a few minutes ago. Like many municipalities across Connecticut, a substantial portion of the housing stock was built after 1970, largely as a response to the baby boomers. Less than 14 percent of the housing stocks are multifamily. So again, this gives you a pretty good rundown. The back is kind of neat too. Housing stock, town age. The fact is, our age, in our community, is 42. Some of the other towns in our area are even higher, 43, 44. So it's interesting. So we're a little bit younger than I, and. We're still old as a community, but we're still younger than.
Speak for yourself.
Look around, I don't believe. I wonder if people who decide to live in Simsbury either make a conscious or an unconscious decision based on what they see around them when they come here versus what they see in Farmington or Avon. That's the tipping point is what I'm concerned about, Ira.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right. I've talked to a number of people that come in, they're either new to town or they live somewhere else in the area, but then they came here, they drive down Hot Metal Street and they think, wow, this is really great, let's find a place to live here. I've talked to a number of people since I've been here as well. It's a very impressive center. People come from quite a distance away to see what the center looks like, and I think that is an attraction in the long term. I think the types of thing that the town is doing now, the performing arts center, or the town's attention to detail, how Hot Metal looks, some of the other things that are available for kids, I think the programs, obviously the education programs are good. Frankly, I think the educational programs in probably all the surrounding towns are really good, no question of that. So why would they come here and pay more taxes because it's the ambiance that the center has and the monetary services that are offered?
Not only is our town center nice, we've got one. We've got an identifiable town center.
Yep. I think that's exactly right, and I think that, and one of the things that, in terms of going back to character again, is to make sure that we continue to develop and continue to densify and not losing that character.
Right, that's the trick.
But that was the charrette, that was the point.
It is, and we're, believe it or not, and I wanna be specific and reasonable to say in a second. There have been several developments in the town center that would've been really interesting and good developments that were right along the lines of what we did in the town center direct, that the landowners couldn't come to an agreement, you know? So it's kinda like, we've met the enemy and he's us, you know, kinda thing, where whether there was a discussion between an adjacent property owner or whether it was between a buyer and a landowner who has owned the property for so many years, they don't owe anything on it anymore. And so they're being really hard-nosed about moving forward. So until those people decide that they really do wanna change and move forward, it's hard to make progress.
They can't see the money?
Well, you know.
Maybe that's not the driving factor?
Apparently not.
Well, I think it's that, I think that that's not always the driving factor. The other thing is that they may think that it's worth a little bit more than market thinks it's worth.
They can see the money.
They can see the money.
This is a, this is a really nifty chart as well. This is, has a lot of information on it. It talks a lot about housing values, a lot about the town, our median age. Interestingly enough, and when you get this up in this corner here.
That's the one you emailed us. That's the one you emailed us.
There's a bunch of them, I'm not sure if I did or not, but I wanna make sure you got this, and there's, it's kind of, it's a breakdown between the number of owner-occupied units, renter-occupied units, and then there's a small number of vacant units. And if you look at the comparison of those with the other towns, it's really kind of starting.
That's a Farmington Valley analysis?
That's Simsbury.
Yeah. You said you're something comparison, there are two of the other towns.
You're right.
I guess just from my perspective, Bill, I'm concerned about that saturation point. Obviously, I talked a little bit about it, but I would like to have maybe, I don't know if you're the person to do it, but conceptually, in 20 years, what do all these projects look like in all the different zones? So in 20 years, what is it gonna be? What are gonna be the apartments? Where are they gonna be? Are they gonna be in downtown? Are they gonna be in Weetang? Are they gonna be in the North Village? Kinda conceptually, how you, how you view it. Because my, my main, again, concern is, is the saturation at the speed. So we have approved about 600 apartments in the past year, and the town's been, it had about 700, I think, according to this one, it had about 700 apartments. So it's almost doubled the number of apartments in a number of years.
I don't feel the development. I was under the misconception that Meadowwood was an apartment-oriented. It's not.
Oh, yeah, no, so I'm not even including Meadowwood.
Well, I thought you were including that in that extra 700 because we basically only have 170 that are actually online, along with this one, maybe an extra 300.
But there's some recently built, I think Kevin's adding.
Right, so you have.
So you're adding up recently built, proposed, approved.
Correct.
Into one big number.
Correct. You know, I think the ace in the hole is that the developers don't wanna stick their necks out too far either. Right? So if, they made it very clear to me that they're gonna use a phased approach, okay? And they're gonna develop at the pace that the market demands, and they're gonna try to stay ahead of it just a little bit, so, you know, they're not caught with no inventory.
What's the neck on Bill's schlock?
I'm convinced that these will be, you know, well-built, higher, you know, expectable or expected quality.
I agree.
I think that's a really good point, because I think people that are gonna come to town are not gonna rent an apartment and pay whatever it's gonna cost here when they could go to Subington or Bristol or some other place that wouldn't be perceived as having as much character as we have. And they're not gonna pay those rents unless they are in fact that quality. Question about, you know, what's it gonna look like in 20 years? That's a really good question, and that's what this commission's job is as we look at the plan of conservation and development.
And that's why I'm, and that's why you're concerned. I'm for development. I wanna see it coming to town, but again, it's just the speed at which it takes place is.
I think the market is gonna have a lot to do with it.
But we also have a lot to do with how fast we approve it. Right?
It's also been sleeping.
So it's our, it's our job also to put a throttle on.
It's been asleep, Kevin, for a while.
What's that?
It's been asleep for a while.
Oh, yeah.
If you spread this over from starting in 2007 or something, it wouldn't be quite as shocking, I think.
Well, but there's always been a boom-bust factor in all the cycles for the last 50 years, since the end of World War II, there's always been that cycle that you overbuild and then it has to be absorbed, and then you overbuild again and it has to be absorbed. So there is no smooth rhythm to this, but we don't have any high-end rentals in this town until.
Mill Pond.
Mill Pond came online. Almost all the rest of them that were built back in the 70s never looked high-end.
I think too, it's very interesting, I mean, what Ron said tonight, they're 87 percent full, which is, you know, phenomenal, and they're just barely, just got the CO for their last building just recently.
Oh, for Canton for West Street.
Yeah, so I think that that is gonna show a lot of people, they like the town, but maybe they can't afford that particular price point, there's gotta be something else that's still high-quality. I think that the potential for a smaller living place where, you know, as Ferk said about his kids, you know, they can go on vacation, they can lock the door, then have to worry about the place freezing the pipes up or whatever, you know, is, those are kinds of things that I think the younger generations, the millennials, are gonna, are gonna really gravitate toward, or even retire.
People wanting to move out of their houses and stay in town, this gives them high-end opt, you know, as compared to Powder Forest.
For what I want of that.
First phase, where they were dropping $400,000 on a house along with.
Tax bill.
As well.
And the upkeep and everything.
And the upkeep, you know, I mean, they're spending as much as they, why would they have moved? I could never understand why they would even move from what the intent was is to empty nesters.
I think that we underestimate too the business that Big Y is gonna bring from Brandy, and that if we get kids living in the apartments here, we might go, we might go across, they don't go skating center, all kinds of things that we just need, the rest of the, we need critical mass and bugs, and that's what it's gonna create. Once that happens, you can't, it just goes.
Right, but we don't wanna sacrifice the, the character, the character that we have.
Correct.
Okay?
My time for it.
Right, right. I'm with Kevin. You know, there's, there's an acceptable increase, we don't wanna overshoot it too much, and we don't wanna get to the point where the character of the town is metamorphized.
I think the character, character of the town can be hurt in a lot of ways, but one thing that I notice when I drive down Route 10 is to have what are billed as luxury department, apartments behind the Dunkin' Donuts is something I don't get. I just don't see how you put luxury apartments or how you want people to perceive those as luxury department, apartment, I keep saying department. Apartments behind the Dunkin' Donuts. That, I realize zoning allows that and that's, that's the way that is, but I'm not sure that that's what you wanna see. I don't, wouldn't wanna see a lot of that.
Are those considered a luxury apartment?
That's what you call them?
That's what the owner calls them, but the other thing is that you need to think what the other possibilities were. There were condominiums behind them right now.
Right, that's right.
And that property could've been a lumberyard, storage yard.
Yeah, that's right.
So there are a lot.
But it's not a luxury lumberyard.
Could be, could be a luxury D home people, I don't know.
It's got a luxury view of the mountain.
Ira, what's the situation with Big Y?
What I was told most recently is that.
There's a lot of rumors flowing around.
Skating Center apparently is ready to sign off on the easement and put that, put that easement on the property, and they're ready to move forward. The next thing that has to happen as far as we're concerned is that they need to come in with their plan for the site and get their building from that.
That's true. And they're still very interested in acquiring or occupying that property?
Yeah, I talked to the owner, I talked to the Big Y people two days ago.
I just heard rumors that they were getting cold feet and they were almost prepared to pull, you know, pull their.
Big Y?
But not knowing, you know, rumors are rumors because nothing's happening and everybody's got their own version of why.
All I can tell you is that I talked to him two days ago and he really listened.
Well, you're the point person, so you would know more than anyone, you have the most of the data.
That's, I think that's kind of enough propaganda for this evening, and I gave you a bunch.
Very much appreciate it. Thank you for doing that work.
I think there's a bunch of different stuff there. If you have any questions, please let me know. I think as we go through things and as this commission goes through things and the zoning commission goes through them, hopefully some of this information is helpful. I am hopeful that one of the things that we will see in the very near future is some real workforce housing. And what I mean by that is workforce housing that's actually specifically restricted so that people that are not of higher income, that is, the people that qualify under our incentive housing zone or workforce housing overlay can actually live there. Those would be de-restricted units, and the way the regulation that we have works is that 20 percent of those units will be de-restricted, 80 percent of them will be market rate. So there's plenty of flexibility there for the developers to make.
But they'd all look the same.
Yeah, absolutely. Couldn't tell them apart.
Well, what was that state program to promote that that went to sleep for funding?
Yeah, that was the, well, the incentive housing zone.
Right.
Okay. What we ended up doing was creating that workforce housing overlay zone, which is very close to that, has the same densities in it, but what we said is we wanna see a couple of things. We had, we want more design over the design. We wanted a little bit more design over the density, and we wanted to see the income levels, the area meeting incomes rather than state meeting income. So we tweaked it a little bit for Simsbury. We would really like to see, and I'm gonna twist somebody's arm one of these days and say, you know, part of your development better be some workforce housing because we need that. We don't have that right now. We have units that rent for less than, you know, expensive units, no question, but we really need some units in order to make some compressions on this whole affordable housing effort. We only have 3.4 percent of our housing is classified as affordable, and we have to have at some point up to 10 percent. And as you know, the more units you build, the percentages get harder and harder to move up, obviously, so.
Ira, have there ever been any, I'm sure there have, surveys of the townspeople that try to understand what they believe the character of the town is?
Yeah, we did a survey back in, it was '06 or '07, Alan was talking about last time.
62 percent.
2007, I think.
Yeah, I think, you know, that was, I think that was a great survey, and it did talk about, a lot about what people wanted to see in terms of the size of things. That was the whole big box era thing. And so a lot of people were saying, we wanna see things that are appropriately sized for the town. They didn't mind development as long as it was appropriately sized. Our marketing study that we just finished said basically the same thing. We'd rather have, you know, 10 firms with 10 people in them rather than firms with hundreds of people in them. We think that the context, that is, the fabric, the community would be preserved and the character would be preserved.
Did it ever touch on workforce housing or?
It's a subject, you know, I don't know, I gotta go back and.
It talked about apartments, very, very briefly. It talked about retail types. It talked about views.
Well, you know.
Look at Chicago.
Yeah, that'd be good. I think, you know, I've lived here for 20 years, and I think there's a certain exclusivity that people feel is a component of the character of the town, and introducing a large percentage of either actual low-income housing or workforce-type housing may upset some people.
Except we have to have a certain number.
The numbers have to work too.
Right now.
We need, just we don't have any place for those other people to go to.
You said 10 percent.
The apartment complexes we have right now, most of them are falling into that category where they are entry-level, moderately priced apartment complexes. where they are entry-level, moderately priced apartment complexes. I mean, they're, they're nothing to brag about by any means, but there's no other options for those people to move out of, which is what we're presenting now. So those numbers will bound to drop.
What was that 10% you said? What does that compare?
That's what the state law is with regard to our affordable housing shares. We have, as I said, about 3.4% now.
What's, what's the implications of not satisfying that?
That we're subject to another development like Meadowwood, for example, where it's a density, all the regulations basically are thrown out the window. They, interestingly enough, that was, I think, a real, 622 acres or something. They came, or they came, no, 300 and something acres, but they came in with a development of 644 units, that's what it was.
A metal.
Yes. Ultimately, what they ended up with was basically 299 units on just a little over 300 acres, which was exactly the zoning, the density that was zoned for after 11 years of litigation. So, you know, it, it doesn't make any sense for them to do that. And my view is that if we can get a good product out of somebody, a well-designed product in the right location, that that's far preferable than fighting somebody for years and years and years about something that ultimately they're going to prevail on anyway. So very hard for towns to win an eight-30Gs.
Doesn't the price of land dictate that though? I mean, we can't force people to put in this housing stock.
Yeah, we can.
Because it's, I mean, why, why did it not happen here then?
Well, I think.
Why did we not make an, you know, this, this supposedly workforce housing is not affordable in any way, shape or form. They may want to call it that, but let's be honest, it's not.
Well, what.
And we're having these developments that are coming and they're all apartment-type oriented and we're not pressing that envelope.
What I need to get the zoning commission to, to, to see is have the same, the same response to that question and hopefully put in something, you know, some towns have what's called inclusionary zoning. It says if you build 100 units, 20 of them have to be affordable, period. When we become really desirable, we can get away with that. Towns in Fairfield County get away with that. They also have a fee in lieu of. So if you, for example, don't want to provide that affordable housing, you pay X dollars, it goes into a fund for affordable housing. And those funds really add up quickly. We have to do two things. One is we have to have the will to do that, pass a regulation like that. The second thing is we have to become desirable enough as a community where we can force people to do that. If you do it too early, people are going to say, I'm not interested in there, I'll just go to Avon or I'll go to Farmington. And so we need to be very careful about how we do that. I would think in the next year or so, I would try to bring something to that, like that to the zoning commission and hopefully to this commission and say, should we consider this? Should we consider requiring some percentage of the development to be affordable?
To get to our 10% before something's dumped on us.
Yeah, and if we continue to make steps toward that, there's actually a moratorium. We can, we can make progress toward that and get a moratorium put on that. So somebody can't come in and force one down our throat if we're making good steps toward that. One of the last figures I had, this is sort of interesting too, there's been lots of discussion lately about the wage, you know, the, what the minimum wage is. Housing wage for the Hartford, West Hartford, East Hartford metro area to afford, for the amount, for a household to afford a typical two-bedroom apartment in the metro areas, the wage that you need to earn is 2117. So that 1010 is like half of that and those folks would not be able to afford a typical apartment, typical two-bedroom apartment in the Hartford area. Thought that was a pretty interesting number. Anyway, puts things into perspective a little bit for some of us, so. You know, I think that we have a, a number of good things to look at in the future, some interesting discussions. I think this is great, back and forth discussions, you ask great questions and I think that's.
This, I want to thank Bill especially for framing the questions, but I think this was worthwhile.
Yeah, and again, I would like, conceptually, with the different zones, what you kind of envision, you know, just, that's me personally, because I'd like to kind of see it on a map and say, well, this is kind of what we're envisioning over here with the Hartford property. It's already going to be shovel-ready, so the developers are going to, basically going to be able to walk in, they're going to be able to put down a development, they're going to be able to put in mixed use and we're really not going to have too much.
Kevin, have you seen the, the charrette document for the town center?
Yeah.
That's perfect for that, okay? And there'll be one like that for Wheaton I assume.
Well, that's what I mean, in total.
The Hartford's tougher because that's kind of a moving target.
Well, no, but the draft regulation kind of identified that, you know.
Yeah, it gives you three choices to, so it's a little harder to picture, you don't know which one.
I talked about, that's a, it is a moving target in a way because we don't know for sure, once we put that regulation in place, whether somebody will say, yeah, we love it just the way it is, or we want to tweak it or whatever, we don't know. I mean, that's obviously a big, we're working very hard right now to pin down some final language. Hopefully by the end of this week or Monday, I'll have it pinned down.
Aaron, in PAD regulations, is the PAD supposed to be per parcel?
No, it actually considers several, considers several parcels because it specifically said parcels that are across the road from each other can be considered.
I see.
So it can be several. The idea is that, and this is interesting, that their assisted living person, assisted living facility person finally sort of came to and decided to become part of this whole thing. I think initially they didn't understand the PAD. They kept reading and said, we don't, we don't really get this. And I had several discussions with them and said, you could develop that assisted living facility on that property in that zone just the way it is now, or you can become part of the PAD and give yourself more flexibility. So that's what they decided ultimately to do, but it was like volunteer.
When did they decide that?
A week ago.
I was going to say, two weeks ago, it was not included in the PAD.
And I told them, we had to have that information ahead of time so that we could send it out to you before this meeting, so.
I think that a lot of the discussion tonight is the launch for the new plan of conservation and development. These are the things we've got, just like we did back during, we fought before, you have to put those issues there and it probably won't be 300 pages like last time, but the meat will be there, but those are the questions.
Reality of.
It's a philosophy.
Reality of the economy kind of pushes that agenda every 10 years. I mean, that's why they're asking for it, because we have to make tweaks.
Yeah.
There's just not office space to be, you know, to be filled anymore. There's too much, you know, there's too much vacancy. I was down at Avon Park South and that place is 50% vacant, all of their buildings, you know, that whole complex. And you can do the same thing in a more desirable spot, say like Griffin Office Park, and they are, you know, they're down to a bit 40% vacancy in that area as well. And those are much more desirable, closer to infrastructure, and they're finding it hard to fill. So you're not going to find that, that new talent, new businesses are going to be influencing our spaces here. I mean, Powder Forest is a prime example, they haven't been able to pull someone in there for 30 years.
Yeah, I think part of that has to do with the type of client that you're looking for. For example, we're trying to attract young people that are innovators, that maybe they want to, two or three of them get together and they want to sit in Starbucks and have their own, I don't know, app business or whatever. They don't need a big space. But I do get calls often from people that say, we'd like to have an office, you know, here in town somewhere, but there's really no place or there's nothing new right now. And so I'm hopeful that when I get those people to call me and say, call Powder Forest, you know, call Andy DeFato and whoever it is, that we can ultimately get some of these places built and fill those up with those smaller businesses. I, I think there's a market out there, I just think it's a timing thing, where we need to get some of the younger people to stay in town rather than to go over the hill into West Hartford. And I think ultimately it'll be successful, so.
I mean, people like Bob Hensley, he left Travelers, he wanted to be his own boss and started the office, you know, a dozen people or so were successful and there are those people, they want to, at a certain point, I've got some money put away and I want to be my own boss and I know this specialty insurance thing really does and they need them, but they want hip space, necessarily not that big, but they want to have their own air.
The buildings you were showing me the other day are the prime location for something like that in future because they're putting them up to be filled one at a time as compared to not having a building. I mean, right now, we just don't have any space that you can get 10,000 square feet.
That's right.
You know, even though I would assume that there's probably, there's vacancy right here at Powder, Powder Forest and some of those office buildings, there's plenty of space.
I asked them that question the other day and they said, there really wasn't as much as, as we think.
Available space?
Yeah, exactly. You know, so if you need 10,000 square feet, it's, it's not that easy to come, that's my understanding.
Oh, it's not.
Hi, Aaron, any more communications administrative business?
Thinking, oh, I wanted to tell you, at the next meeting, I had a request today from the first selectman. As you know, as you may know, the Meadowwood development in the north end are beginning to haul that material out of there. Some people are not happy about that.
Last next meeting was.
Was always planned, so apparently some people turned in pages of questions and so I forwarded that to Griffin Land. They, first selectman would like them to come and explain to this board at your next meeting, what's going on, the status of things and how well they're taking care of, being trucks on the road and all that kind of stuff, so.
I thought we agreed to all this procedural technical.
We did, but there's always voices that are.
Yeah, when it actually happens.
New record people.
They forget.
Rocks in the road and.
Yeah. If you take one of those trucks at 7:00 o'clock in the morning doing 20 miles an hour down Bushy Hill, it's impossible to get the work.
I think maybe they're worried about the dirt.
Well, hopefully it's supposed to be covered and then somebody came in today and they want to sue the town because it was a rock in the road and I suggested to them it wasn't the town that dropped it. Maybe they should talk to the truck that dropped it. But anyway, so she's asked, Mary's asked that they come next, next meeting and talk to you about that, so just wanted to let you know.
What planning for that?
Well, you, this commission had a lot to do with sort of, you know, when John was on as chairman, you know, there was a lot of discussion about exactly how this would take place. There was a development agreement, there were conservation easements, there was lots of discussion about how they were going to control the dust off the site, that kind of stuff. So those are all in planning documents that we'll get to you before the next meeting.
We had to sign off, we had to sign off as a committee on that agreement through the court. The court held all of us, of all the different boards accountable and say, we all had to sign off on it before it was a signed agreement.
So we just need to make sure they're following the protocol.
Yeah, and I can assure you that Mr. Beach is on it most days, full-time. So it'll be an interesting discussion. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, let's move on to the minutes. Let's approve of the minutes for February 25th, 2014, regular meeting. Do we have any conditions or deletions from page one? During that, let's move on to page two. Ready for page three?
The last paragraph, do we have any of these last names? So Ensign Bickford's representative, do we need to state that?
I guess it is.
What's that? What line is that for?
It's line 22.
Question, question, question. Oh, nice, nice printout.
I didn't look again.
I don't know why it is.
Mine does the same thing.
I don't want to suggest a numbering line, it's 400 years ago.
So Jess, I think Ferg is suggesting put Andy DeFata's name in there. Uh, 122, Ensign Bickford's representative, Andy DeFata.
Page five.
On, maybe on, I didn't look in a dictionary, is there a word subsum? Underneath marketing study phase two, the.
Page 18, line 188.
The study has been.
Submitted.
Submitted? Is that what it is?
He said subsumed.
Discussed? I don't know what, I didn't, it's not even submitted.
It's a subsumed meeting.
If it's a real word, I like it.
I think it is a word.
It is, it is.
Have you looked it up, Janice?
I didn't look it up.
I didn't say it.
I have no idea what it means.
It means it's because they're so busy doing this other stuff that it's become less, right, of an issue.
Oh. Opposite of kunsu.